Hello and welcome to the first State Energy Planning Board meeting, which begins the development process for the next state energy plan. I'm Doreen Harris, President and CEO of NYSERDA, and the Chair of the State Energy Planning Board. At today's meeting, I will invite my fellow board members to introduce themselves, and I will share some opening remarks. Then our focus will be to consider and act upon a resolution to commence a state energy planning proceeding and direct the publication of the draft scope for the plan for public comment. I'd like to start this meeting by first saying thank you to all of you who are here with us today and tuning in online. Today's meeting is open to the public to observe, and there will be opportunities for public comment and input, which my colleague Carl Moss, NYSERDA's Vice President for Policy Analysis and Research, will speak to later in the meeting. I'm also pleased to share that I have appointed a new Secretary for our Board, Sarah Simpson, who is a Senior Counsel at NYSERDA. We are also joined today by Peter Costello, NYSERDA's General Counsel, who serves as Legal Counsel to this Board. Now, welcome and thank you to my fellow board members for your participation in this important process. First, I'd like to welcome my colleague Commissioners. Many of us worked together previously on the development of the state's scoping plan for climate action. I will follow the order of the slide here in asking each of you to introduce yourselves and say a few words as you see fit. First, I'll introduce Commissioner, President and CEO Hope Knight of Empire State Development.
Good afternoon, Hope Knight, President and CEO of Empire State Development. And as Head of the Primary Economic Development Entity, it's a pleasure to be here. New York has been very successful in attracting many new companies to locate, and so this is, along with other areas that we need to focus on, this is one that I am very happy to be here to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Commissioner Ball of the New York State Department of Agriculture and Markets.
Well, good afternoon. Great to be back amongst friends and people that care about the subject matter here. Very much appreciate the opportunity. Agriculture is a large capacity to contribute here in this discussion and look forward to having those discussions. Things just work a little better when we work together, so happy to be a part of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Interim Commissioner Sean Maher of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation.
Thanks, Doreen. So yeah, Sean Maher, Interim Commissioner of DEC. Just to echo something that Doreen said, I know my predecessor Basil was very much in the trenches with you all on the climate scoping plan that was developed, and I just wanted to extend my gratitude to each and every one of you around this table who really did help us immensely in creating a good scoping plan, which is obviously now going to inform the state energy plan in our conversations today. So it goes without saying, obviously, the scoping plan really provides a good framework for how the state is going to achieve our greenhouse gas emissions reductions, achieve net zero emissions, increase renewable energy, and ensure that all communities are benefiting equitably from our clean energy transition. So our teams are sleeves rolled up here at DEC. Look forward to the conversation today and the work ahead of us on this state energy plan. Thanks, Doreen.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to welcome Secretary of State Walter Mosley. Over to you.
Thank you, President Harris. Again, Walter Mosley, Secretary of State, Department of State. I was getting with my former colleague in the legislature. We are probably the only two people who actually voted on enacting this body together a few years ago. But now, my capacity working in the Cabinet at the Department of State, obviously, we're looking to unlock the synergies between this body and what we're doing at the Department of State, whether it's remediation of our brownfields or our SmartGrow initiatives. Again, we have so many opportunities to kind of highlight whatever's extrapolated from this body in an effort to meet our objectives and goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Commissioner Jackie Bray of the New York State Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Services.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much. You know, we're the folks that show up when things go wrong and do our very best to make sure that we plan appropriately so that we limit the types of things that can go wrong. And so really appreciate our inclusion here because so often, availability of energy, access to energy becomes a linchpin during a crisis or in the, you know, in the recovery from one.
Thank you. Next, we have Chair Rory Christian of the New York State Department of Public Service and the Public Service Commission.
Thank you very much. It's an honor to be here, surrounded by all these individuals with aligned interests. The state energy plan is near and dear to the commission's heart and the day-to-day responsibilities, maintaining reliability, affordability, and resiliency of the system. So happy to be here today to engage in the discussion around achieving those outcomes. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we have Kevin Malone as the Designee for Commissioner McDonald of the New York State Department of Health.
Good afternoon, Kevin Malone, New York State Department of Health, representing State Health Commissioner McDonald, and very happy to be here as part of this important process. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Commissioner Roberta Reardon of the New York State Department of Labor.
Thank you, Doreen. It is a pleasure to be here today to continue the great work that we did on the Climate Action Council. And I, you know, as the workforce agency, I'm looking forward to continuing the conversation about the workforce in the green economy to come. And I know that there's lots of important things in the scoping plan about this, so looking forward to it.
And the last Commissioner, but not least, Commissioner Marie Therese Dominguez of the New York State Department of Transportation.
Good afternoon, President Harris. On behalf of the New York State Department of Transportation, I serve as Commissioner, and it's great to be here. Everybody knows transportation is an integral part of our climate objectives, and we very much appreciate the continued collaboration with all at this table and all of our partners as we continue to work together to actually develop the state energy plan and move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, fellow Commissioners. Continuing on, I would also like to welcome SUNY Chancellor John King as the new Governor Appointee to this Board. SUNY is an excellent resource for the state in driving and expanding clean energy research, advancing innovative clean energy technologies, and educating a clean energy workforce, which are all critical for us to realize our long-term goals. So Chancellor King, welcome, and of course, please do say a few words.
Thanks so much, President Harris. I'm thrilled to be here, grateful to Governor Hochul for the appointment. Particularly excited because SUNY has 40% of the state's buildings. We spend about $200 million a year on energy. So sustainability is a top priority for us around our facilities. As you pointed out, we're leading the way on renewable energy research and climate resilience research across the state, particularly, I think, of the work at Binghamton on battery technology research. And we are also doing the work alongside Commissioner Reardon to prepare the green jobs workforce that we desperately need. So excited to be a part of the Board and to contribute all the resources that SUNY can bring to bear in support of the Board's efforts.
Welcome. I also wanted to welcome Assembly Energy Committee Chair DeeDee Barrett as the new Assembly Appointee to the Board. It's fantastic to have your experience, and I look forward to expanding our work together in this energy plan forum. Chair Barrett, certainly introduce yourself and welcome.
Thank you, President Harris. I'm Assembly Member DeeDee Barrett, and I represent the beautiful 106th Assembly District in the Hudson Valley, and I chair the Assembly's Committee on Energy. And I'm here on the appointment of our Speaker, Carl Hasty, and honored to be here. As my former colleague, our Secretary of State, said, he and I are the only people on this panel who actually voted for the CLCPA, and proudly so. But I just want to remember and remind us, because this is something that I often say, you know, that was 2019, and we had a President Trump at that time. No one had ever heard of COVID. No one had imagined a war in Ukraine, let alone in the Middle East. Inflation costs, a lot of things have changed since then. So I'm hoping that as we move forward with this plan, which I know this group hasn't met since 2020, that we really will be looking at affordability issues, recognizing the important role of our ratepayers in all of this. And I know that Chair Christian is always mindful of that, but that, you know, that that's part of how we move forward with our planning. And I'm honored to be part of this team to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to extend a welcome to our standing Senate Appointee, William Suggs, who serves as President of the New York Metropolitan Chapter of the American Association of Blacks in Energy and in his position at Con Edison. He is also a leader in New York's utility industry. We thank you for your previous engagement on the Board, and I look forward to working with you on this energy plan as well, Mr. Suggs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mike, give me a great pleasure to be here and continue some great work that we have lined out for us. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, but certainly not least, we sincerely appreciate the participation of the New York Independent System Operator, represented by President and CEO Rich Dewey. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Doreen, and thank you to the Board for inviting me to be part of this. As the independent entity that's responsible for operating the bulk power grid in New York State and administering the wholesale markets, we are deeply impassioned to maintain the reliability of the system in New York and also through our efficient markets, make it as affordable as possible for New Yorkers. So with that mindset, we approach the hard work of this Board with pride. We have some extensive engineering, economic, and analytic resources in our organization. We're happy to bring that work forward to help inform the recommendations coming out of this committee. So looking forward to the work at hand, and thanks for including us.
Thank you. So with these introductions, I am establishing attendance. And note, we have a quorum for today's meeting. So as we start today's proceeding, I did want to start by saying a few words. I am excited to kick off the state energy planning process, which is primarily an opportunity to look forward in the planning for the continuation of the clean energy transition for the next 15 years. But as I want to draw our attention to progress for the future, I need to take note of two important items and historic items at the same time. First, I'm proud to say that NYSERDA will be turning 50 next year. It's striking to think back to the energy crisis of the 1970s, which led to the establishment of NYSERDA, and how in the face of the climate crisis, we are once again called to serve as a pivotal element of the state's transition to our future energy economy. Then as now, technology solutions are stepping stones along the path to that future energy economy, powered by energy that will improve our public health, expand our economy, and result in environmental improvement. So building those technologies also means building the markets that will provide those new energy services founded upon realizing these joint health, economic, and environmental outcomes. So certainly, I used the term earlier that NYSERDA serves as an element of the state's strategies to transition to these new markets. But what we strive to do at NYSERDA is to also serve as a catalyst that brings all of the elements together that are necessary for advanced technologies to create and thrive in new markets and realize the promise of improved energy outcomes as a result. So more insured reliability, greater affordability for households and businesses, and increased resilience against system disruptions caused by myriad sources. And realizing these future energy outcomes requires deliberate and thoughtful planning. So I will forewarn my Board colleagues, we at NYSERDA are very passionate when it comes to our energy planning work. I wouldn't call us geeks, but we are passionate. So we embrace this planning role very seriously, and it's a couple of reasons why. We understand that energy planning is an inherently multi-disciplinary exercise. That is perhaps most evident by the Constitution of this Board, representing our public health and workforce, our state resources from our physical assets, as our air and our coastlines, to our economic assets, ranging from the individual dairy farm to the largest industrial manufacturing plant, and also for our security and system reliability and resilience. And certainly now, the integration of education into our energy planning across the spectrum of advanced research at our universities to the development of the technical skills needed to install and operate our energy systems has never been more critical. We also understand that energy planning is also inherently multi-interest, and we need the engagement of all local communities, our workforce, our businesses, and our energy providers to come together to ensure that all interests are accounted for. It will only be in that full accounting of all interests that this plan will be able to translate into action. So given NYSERDA's upcoming birthday, and honestly, that this will be my first time to chair and guide our planning activities here, I did find a draft of New York's very first state energy plan. This draft dated 1979 set the standard for energy planning on that multi-discipline and multi-interest platform. There are just a couple of lines that I will quote right from the top of the document. And it says, and I quote, "These documents present a comprehensive examination of the energy future which will exist if we do not act and the energy future which might exist if we do. We have learned that it is necessary to plan for an energy future that will, in turn, contribute to good economic development." And I might say today, we would also insert a healthy climate at the same time. Energy planning is ever so more central to our state's future. Energy planning determines where, when, and how to invest. When done well, today's decisions will address tomorrow's needs and challenges. So ensuring we maintain that commitment to comprehensive energy planning is a core value of NYSERDA. We understand the dislocations that can happen if this is disrupted, and we understand the need for collaboration to ensure all disciplines are appropriately considered. So I very much look forward to working with each of you to ensure a successful energy plan. A few related notes. Many of you are aware of and perhaps participated in our Future Energy Economy Summit, which the Governor hosted, last Thursday. This summit began a dialogue around the issues we will need to address to advance our growing renewable energy industries across our state while also supporting economic development. These issues include taking account of the new technologies that will be needed to support a deeply renewable grid of the future, better understand the current economic development created by federal policies such as the Inflation Reduction Act, the Infrastructure Act, the CHIPS Act, and finally, examining the energy requirements and available technologies that will advance our zero emission grid policy and set our state up for new economic opportunities. So I actually, as we speak today and beyond, I will be looking at our draft scope and our planning work through these three facets, particularly given our 15-year planning horizon for this plan. So I do look forward to the many comments I'm sure we'll receive on the draft scope that we will be discussing today. And related to last week's summit, we certainly do also welcome public comment on the draft Advanced Nuclear Technologies Blueprint that was presented at the summit, and that will provide valuable input as we look to finalize the blueprint by the end of the year. And as I also noted at the summit, New York State is making significant progress toward the requirements of the 2019 Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act, or CLCPA, or Climate Act, as it's commonly known. Our current energy plan, which incorporates the goals outlined in the Climate Act, has served as an important guide for government and private sector actors to respond to and understand the order of magnitude, scale, and pace needed to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and mitigate the worst impacts of climate change. And so, as Interim Commissioner Maher referenced, as directed in the Climate Act, this upcoming state energy plan will incorporate the recommendations of the scoping plan. And certainly, the scoping plan was providing a 2050 perspective on these transitions necessary to achieve the emissions reductions required by the Climate Act. Whereas this energy plan will really look at the first 15 years to 2040 and focus on the energy system requirements and technology market readiness to advance that longer-term goal. So certainly, this energy transition may be experiencing some challenges over the past few years from forces that we in New York cannot fully control. But there is no denying that New York continues to lead and in our notable progress to date, I have the following to say. Certainly, through New York's nation-leading New York Sun program, our state has installed over 1 gigawatt of distributed solar and is the top community solar market in the nation for the second year in a row. This is in addition to resetting our offshore wind portfolio and breaking ground on the construction of Sunrise Wind and the largest dedicated port for offshore wind at South Brooklyn Marine Terminal, all while the nation's first utility-scale offshore wind project, South Fork Wind, is creating energy. And the 339-mile Champlain-Hudson Power Express Transmission Project is also under construction to deliver clean hydropower directly into New York City in the spring of 2026. Electric vehicle sales have increased more than 400% since 2021 and are now over 10% of all car sales in New York State. And heat pump installations across the state increased by 23% over the past two years. Additionally, we are taking great strides to make the most leverage that we can of federal funds. And we were the first state in the country to make the Federal Inflation Reduction Act Energy Efficiency Program funds available to homeowners across our state. These funds are focused on communities experiencing underinvestment, and it will expand our state-supported efforts to provide new energy-efficient appliances and housing in those underserved communities. Collectively, these projects are generating clean energy, creating thousands of good-paying jobs, and stimulating local economies across the state. And they are also demonstrating important reliability and cost savings. Data from the New York Independent System Operator shows that in a heat wave this past July, behind-the-meter solar production in the state shaved an important 6% off peak energy requirements. So this contribution ensured reliability for our existing generation fleet and no doubt also influenced peak energy prices during these extremely high-demand days. So these are concrete examples of how our state's energy policies are realizing real system value now. And looking ahead, this next energy plan will take account of current achievements and look out to 2040. And certainly, in light of a highly dynamic near-term market and policy environment, this state energy plan process is a key opportunity for this type of, I'd say, medium-term planning. So this Board and our agency staff will be working together to build from, complement, and synthesize across multiple energy-related policy and planning processes that we are ongoing here in New York. Just to name a few, we have rulemaking for CAP and Invest, the Zero by Forty proceeding, the Grid of the Future proceeding, and multiple other proceedings at the Public Service Commission and the NISO's reliability planning processes. And we look forward to the completion of the ongoing Public Service Commission review of the Clean Energy Standard by early 2025 and the advancement of key actions to accelerate and expand our large-scale renewable energy industry, focusing on deployment goals, interconnection reforms, and the timely implementation of the Rapid Act. Tackling the synthesis across these processes will be exciting, and this Board and the next state energy plan will set broad direction to guide New York's energy-related decision-making. So we will certainly look at future meetings for the Board to create discussion and educational opportunities to foster broader understanding of the complex issues that the state will need to account for over the next 15 years. And throughout this process, our assessment will prioritize those issues that ensure all New Yorkers have access to safe, reliable, and affordable energy as well as ensure appropriate resources are available as we both decarbonize and expand our economy, including attracting energy supply chain businesses to our state. So in conclusion, I want to thank you for your important work, the contributions that you have and will continue to make. And I, with that, will proceed with today's business. Next slide, please. The first item on the agenda today is to accept the meeting minutes of the State Energy Planning Board, held on April 8, 2020. For those members of the Board who were present at the previous meeting, Commissioner Ball, President Dewey, Commissioner Dominguez, Commissioner Reardon, and Mr. Suggs, do you feel these minutes are an accurate representation of the previous meetings? Or are there any comments on the minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes.
I second.
Thank you. We will accept the minutes into the record, and we will post them on the website. Next slide, please. The next item on the agenda is to consider and act upon a resolution to commence a state energy planning proceeding and issue the draft scope for public comment. To start that, I will invite Carl Moss, our Vice President for Policy Analysis and Research at NYSERDA, to present an overview of the state planning proceeding draft scope. Carl?
Great. Thank you, President Harris. Next slide. So before I get into a very quick summary of the scope, which is online, and again, it's a draft proposal, I just wanted to reinforce a couple of the themes that we've already heard today. The first is around synthesis and integration. And really, as an energy planning Board, you know, we will be coming together as staff to support you in the process of integrating all the work that each of your agencies and each of your entities are doing. Also, as the Energy Office for the state, NYSERDA has an important role in doing that type of synthesis work. So pulling together threads from the CAP and Invest work to our EV standards and building standards to some of the alternative ways we're looking at mobility, thinking about how Ag and Markets is supporting us in kind of the dual use of agriculture and energy. And so it's that key synthesis work that really is the focus for this effort, and it's the unique attribute of this energy planning Board. The second theme is collaboration, and I think, you know, we are proud to be the state of 1,000 islands, but New York is not an island, right? So we need to consider ourselves in the context of the region and the globe. And, you know, we have an important role as a leadership state to drive technology and markets and to think about how to grow new businesses here. But it's also critical that we reflect on the technologies and businesses that are growing around us and are able to leverage those, both federal dollars but also market forces, to be able to bring them to New York to help us in our transition. So it's that collaborative spirit of leadership, as well as learning from others, that I think will be an important theme for this energy plan. And so as President Harris mentioned, it is a 15-year look to the future, so we're calling that our midterm. We're still going, of course, to be guided by our 2050 goal and the important activities of our scoping plan. But there's themes that I think we all know and have already heard today. So there's the reliability and security of our system. There's the deep decarbonization of all of our energy system. There's a focus on public health and making sure that everyone benefits from these activities. There's a look at the key issues of affordability of our system. We need to be thinking about equity and a just transition, and then economic development, as energy is the backbone of that future. So it's those themes that I'll be speaking to in the draft scope. I hope that as we look forward to public comment on that scope, we can hope for the public to be able to tell us which aspects are the ones that they're most keenly interested in seeing. So next slide, please. So I'm not going to read these slides. What we did want to do is introduce an outline of the scope, which is online. Our general format of the scope is that it will address key questions. What are some of the key points of inquiry that we think the energy plan should try to address? We propose to weave these themes on the slide across the different aspects of our energy system. So those themes are climate change mitigation adaptation, climate justice, and a just transition for all of our workers, innovation, both in terms of technologies but also business practice and the way that we're bringing forward all aspects of our economy into this transition, as well as economic development. Next slide. So the scope itself proposes to stick to some of the structure we've had in the past with some new aspects. And so we will open with an overview of the energy system. And so it's critical to see how we've gotten to where we are today, but then also to put forward forecasts of where we think our future system might go. We'll then take a deep dive into the electricity system, which is the backbone of our decarbonization, as the scoping plan showed us. And that's both the supply as well as flexible demand. How are we going to animate both sides of the meter to be able to help us in this transition? We'll be looking at nuclear energy. We'll be looking at our fossil energy assets, as well as alternative fuels. Next slide. We'll, of course, take the lens, not only of our supply side and our fuels, but also each of the major end uses. And so we'll be looking at all of those. And so we'll be looking at buildings, which are the largest source of emissions in the state. We'll be looking at our industrial base and how we can help those industries to both grow and decarbonize at the same time. We'll be looking at our transportation system, both as individual drivers but also as a system itself. And then we'll be looking, therefore, at smart growth and think about how our communities can think about using their resources in new ways and the security of that system. Next slide. And then, as I mentioned, the themes will be around collaboration, so being able to leverage the resources and the skills of our local communities, both local government as well as our local community groups, and think about how we can look to the strengths of each of our regions of the state to be able to build in this transition. And as I said, we also need to think about collaboration with the federal government. And President Harris already mentioned some of the incredible assets that we want to try to leverage, from the IRA to the infrastructure law. And then, as we have done in previous plans and the scoping plan, we'll be taking both a deep qualitative and quantitative look at the impact of these proposals. And so we'll be modeling out our energy system out 15 years and thinking about what will be the impact of different choices that we can make, and we'll bring that back to you as a board to help us think through which pathways do we want to lean into, and what are the recommendations you have to help put us on those pathways. So that's a very quick overview of the scope. Again, it's a proposal in draft form on our website. Next slide, I'll speak to a little bit about the process. And so there are four steps outlined here, really, in three phases. So we have a draft scope that we're putting out today. We will then be taking public comment on that. It's a 60-day comment period, and so we hope that the scope will hit the state register by the 25th, which then, if you do the math, takes us to November 24th, which is a Sunday. And so really, then we'll have it due on the 25th. So we're looking for all New Yorkers to engage in this process, to give us feedback on the scope. We will then synthesize that input and bring back to you all by the end of year what we think should be the final scope for this plan. And then we will engage deeply in the drafting of the plan. So we will work with staff and with you all to draft the plan, which we aim to put out next summer. We'll take your feedback on that draft, as well as formal hearings. We'll have a minimum of six hearings, three upstate and three downstate, and that way we'll be able to get not only written voices but directly hearing from all of our citizens around the state. And then we will publish our final plan, which will set course for the next 15 years of our energy transition. And so with that, I want to encourage you all to go to the energy plan website, everyone listening online and in the room, and begin this process with that. And with that, I guess I'll turn it back to you, President Harris, and we can close out this meeting. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Carl. Does any member of the board have questions or comments for Carl or with respect to the draft scope that he just represented? Commissioner Riordan?
I meant to say this in my opening statement. I know that in the CLCPA scoping plan process, we spend a lot of time discussing labor standards for clean energy jobs, and I want to make sure that I articulate that in this room, that going forward, those labor standards are going to be equally as important. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Carl. Looking forward to that comment process and the finalization of the scope. I will now request a motion and a second on Resolution Number 11, Commence Proceeding and Issue Draft Scope. May I have a motion approving the resolution authorizing the commencement of the planning proceeding and the issuance of the draft scope for public comment?
They're moved.
A second? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The motion is carried, and the draft scope of the state energy plan will be issued for public comment. So I will ask staff to prepare the draft scope for issuance in the state register, which we can anticipate a notice inviting comment to be posted in the register on September 25th. I will also ask that the draft scope be available on the energy plan website, which is energyplan.ny.gov. This website will also have the intake form for comments. As you just heard, the deadline for submission of comments is November 25th, which we very much look forward to receiving. Next slide, please. And now we'll-
Maybe one more slide, just for other business stuff.
Oh, thank you. I'll now ask if the members have any other business to bring before the board. Hearing none, I want to thank all board members for coming to the energy plan launch meeting and for your participation today. We will also be considering the future schedule of meetings during the period of the draft scope comment period, and we will be providing notice for future meetings as we take account of the many different issues necessary to prepare for the plan, as well as to keep our process advancing. For members of the public who observed this meeting either here in Albany or via the webcast, thank you. We very much welcome your input on the draft scope, and please also visit our website to sign up for ongoing email updates, as you see here on the screen. So with that, the meeting of the State Energy Planning Board is hereby adjourned. With my thanks.